Here.
Charlie Schneider.
Here.
David Steyer.
Here.
Jim Swanson.
Here.
Tricia Thompson.
Here.
Chris, can you, can we check your mic, your voice one more time, please?
I'm sorry?
Is that okay? Okay, thank you. We just wanted to check the, the voice from the phone one more time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We have a forum to conduct business. General order approval and approval of revision, any changes for tonight that anybody has? Okay, seeing none. We have no recommendations and conditions. Community, communications. Is Jamie here? Jamie, if you'd want to come forward, please? If you could just stand, uh... So, let me state your name, your address. We'll give you three minutes.
Next bit.
If you prefer.
I'm listening.
Okay. Yep, turn that over.
Um, we have three minutes. I will try to make this quick. My name is Jenny. I am a parent of three children in the Menominee School District.
Jenny, could you state your full name and address, please?
Oh, sorry. My name's Jenny Preckle. I live at E4370 Highway 12, Menominee, Wisconsin, 54751.
Thank you.
I have three kids in Menominee School District. A fifth grader at Wacada Elementary, a sixth grader at Menominee Middle School, and a high schooler, that's a freshman. So, my kids have been going to Menominee School District for quite some time. I grew up going to Menominee School District. So, I'm fairly well enveloped into the Menominee School District. I'm just coming to express some of my concerns regarding the consistencies of our children and their education. About a month ago, my son was quarantined due to an exposure in his classroom. After the fact, I was told that the kids had been getting up out of their desks, but no communication had been made to parents regarding this concern. So, there was no ability for me to communicate to my child that he needs to remain in his desk. There was question about whether 15 minutes of exposure had actually occurred. However, because of the inability to actually estimate the exposure period, they quarantined anybody who got out of their desk in the classroom. This was very hard for me to get my child the education that he deserves. We do not have the internet at our house. The school didn't give us a hotspot initially. However, they're utilizing the video. The hotspot only lasts about 30 minutes. I came to the school district. I know Joe probably is sick of hearing from me because I come very often. I've tried to voice my concerns. I have talked to Clint and David, who were very gracious, and David probably listened to me very sweetly, and he was so nice. So, in that same timeframe, the school district's internet server also went out, causing him five additional days of absolutely zero communication between the school. Hence why I came to the district office, because I was struggling to not be able to communicate to anybody. I work as a director of nursing in a nursing home. With everything considering COVID, I am absolutely terrified of it getting into our building and killing our residents. So, I'm spending a lot of time at work. I do not have additional time to take off and spend giving my kids the education that they need. I would love to, and I'm very conflicted, because if I have to take off from work, I don't know who is available to take my position. Watching the board meeting two weeks ago, even though Joe and I don't always get along, there was things that I agree with him on. Particularly that there are hospital beds available. There is a shortage, but a lot of it is due to staffing. And my concern is that there is nowhere to send our children, that nurses and medical staff like me will need to take off. Oh, sorry, that was my three minutes. I suck.
You couldn't have a written statement that you could send to the board?
Sure.
Start to Joe or I, and we can give it to everybody?
Yeah.
With your thoughts? Wouldn't that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
That okay with the board?
I'm sure. Written statements always good.
Huh?
I said, written statements always good for the board.
Just so we can get your thoughts and share them with everybody.
That was the time for three minutes.
It always needs to go fast. Thank you for coming in. Okay, we have one more communication.
Troy, can you hear me? One second here, we're having a minute.
He can hear us.
Oh, I gotta turn him. Turn him up this way, maybe? Troy, give it a shot now. You're not, you're not muted, are you, Troy?
Why don't you get the mic? Bring it up one more time, is the microphone in volume or screen? The mic is to the left.
Right under there.
Right there.
Oh, that's muting me. Bad night for Jamie not to be here. Okay, um, so, what I'll do is I'll introduce Troy before his three minutes. You can see Troy. And then I'll pull this out. I think it should work through my computer. I don't think it'll be a problem that way. But this is Troy Gunderson. He's one of the candidates for state superintendent. And he wanted to introduce himself to the board, so he's gonna speak for three minutes. Clint, you can start it once he gets going, please. But let's make sure this works. Troy, Troy, now.
The screen is black, Joe.
Right.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there we go.
Well, hello, everybody. My name is Troy Gunderson. I'm a candidate for state superintendent of public instruction. As you may or may not know, I grew up in Colfax, Wisconsin, and my mother's ancestors and family are all from Nap and Menominee areas, so I have a long history in that area of state. Following my, I spent a couple years at Spout and then off to the University of Minnesota. Following that, I had a 35-year career in public education, including 16 years as a principal and 12 as a superintendent. I retired this past year from my work here in West Taylor, Wisconsin, and I decided to enter the race for state superintendent of public instruction. I did this race because, quite frankly, I have something to, I think it's time for me to give back. My mother, she, she's a UW Spout graduate, and she was a teacher. My wife's a teacher. My father-in-law's a teacher. And my 35-year career of public education and, and growing up in Colfax, literally all that I have and all the experiences I've had in my lifetime are connected to public education. I think it's time for someone like me to give back. And looking at our state, I think I've created a plan that looks, that centers on focusing on developing a more collaborative, strategic vision for our state, building on the work of the Pluripic Commission. I'd like to emphasize more money for primary education. I'd like to continue to look at developing career opportunities for teachers. And I like to measure our graduates around the work of Redefining Ready. I'm a member of the Redefining Ready Institute that looks at what high school graduates look like when they, when they leave. I think the, we have an opportunity in our state as we come post-COVID to begin to move the needle forward. And what our state needs from Madison is someone who's a little bit more over, a little bit more of a local leader. Someone who has a long history in Wisconsin. I'm actually the fifth generation. My ancestors landed there in Menominee and, of course, were part of the Nap Spout, a lumber company and all of those kinds of things. Became bar owners, restaurant owners, teachers, and eventually school superintendent. So, I, I think we have an opportunity moving forward in our state to provide a more local leadership and someone with that type of background and history has the opportunity to give back to our state. And I think, and we look at some of the issues across our state as the demographics begin to change, it's going to take someone with that type of connection to provide the local leadership and the support and direction we need in Madison to make a difference. Before I go, I'm listening to that woman offer her heartfelt thought about her children. I hear the same story in every school district as I travel the state, struggling parents who are having a difficult time with their children at home. And I think of how lucky we are to have so many school board members willing to give their time and energy to make a difference for kids, because it really can be a thankless job. I would thank you for giving me some time at your board meeting. I wish you the best as I welcome a question or a contact, I've given you information. And I just think it's time for the folks of Madison to be led by someone who grew up in Colfax.
Thank you, Tony. So, appreciate, appreciate you joining us, joining in. And any board members or community that's listening tonight has questions, this contact information will be on board. Doc, Joe?
Yes, I just put in the community communications, I put an attachment to Troy Gunderson's contact information along with his resume and candidate announcement. Thanks, Troy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe, for the opportunity, and thank you, school board. Have a good day.
Thanks, Troy. Good night. Okay, moving on to board superintendent communications. Any board members that have anything?
I've got one.
Fire away, Chris.
Okay, um, and I've been in contact with Wasby and with Guy Levitt this week, and he had some, he's just such a level-headed guy. He has some good advice for us maybe going forward to avoid some of the problems that we have encountered this fall. And just by way of background, I contacted him because, um, you know, we seem to be violating our board norms again. One thing that came to my attention was that at a meeting of the middle school on November 11th, and I have no right to be insulting or causing any problems with this, but Joe did start off the meeting by mentioning that there were some board members who didn't know how to be good board members. And that may or may not be true. But I was concerned that he was using that forum as a vehicle to discredit certain board members that questioned the processes, procedures we've adopted. And that corresponded to exactly what Joe said on our board meeting, when he said that some board members were hurting the district and creating a false narrative. And that may or may not be true, but certainly we shouldn't be using that forum to, um, you know, discredit board members in that particular way. But what Guy did that was super cool, is that he was wanting to get to the root cause of what's going on, and suggested that really what's going on is that there's a whole lot of tension that's going on right now around COVID, code response, and how we react to the situations. And it seemed that there was a kind of a board disconnect in terms of what our policies are and what the plans are that we adapt, and then what the administration does in terms of how they create procedures to then fulfill those plans. And I sent along our reopening plan and policy 2.1 to give some clarity on this. And it seems to be that Guy's advice might be good, and that we get some mediation to get some clarity in terms of what is following board policy and the degree to which that we want to think about following our plan going forward, so we can better care or give advice to our community when they're confused about issues as to whether, whether we are or are not following policy or following plans. So, I just thought I'd put that out there. And if anyone would like any of the communications we've had, I'd be happy to share that with you.
Penny.
Chris, thank you for doing some of that legwork, but I think that in board policy, it does state that it should have already been shared on all of board members, because this is quite shocking to me that you're bringing this up. And I guess I'm feeling a little blindsided right now that you took those steps and got this information and didn't, and didn't share it with us prior.
I just talked to him this afternoon. It was impossible to share that information with you if the conversation happened just a couple hours before the meeting.
Well, you, you know, no, it's technology, and we need to...
Communication I have, which requires no commentary necessarily from board members as to whether or not, you know, you agree with the commentary or not.
Okay, I'm going to take over the meeting. Chris, please stop. Chris, please stop. Okay, I will call on board members as they have their hands up. We're gonna start with Amy.
He is telling us right now.
Tanya.
Uh, Chris, similar to Penny, I really appreciate you going out, but I would like when you do, you go and you use the pronoun "I" and not the word "we", because I did agree with you going out and finding this, and we are not going to go and do something based on something that you found. So, can we please be cautious about using the pronoun "we", because you're speaking on behalf of all of us, and I don't think we all are in agreement of what was done.
All right. Charlie?
Just quickly, Chris, what policy did you say you included with 2011?
I think it's 2.1 that we adopted on March 15th.
Thank you.
Penny, do you have anything else?
I guess my, my piece would be, um, we as a board receive emails and communications quite frequently, and the conversation that you had with Guy Levitt maybe was in the evening or, you know, later today. But you very quickly could have shot up an email to Dr. Zadovsky or to President Steyer, so that we could have all been aware of the information that was sent over to you, and that would be appreciated.
Yep.
Well, I think Chris did it what appropriate, because he's bringing it up in communications, board member communications, telling us what he did and then offering to give the information to us. I don't really see any problem procedurally with what he did. And so, yeah, thanks for looking into it, and I'm looking forward to getting the information so we can move forward with it as an agenda item or something if we need to.
Any other board communications? Hey.
Uh, just a little bit of positive feedback. I did have a couple people that wanted to thank our live streaming of the last meeting. I guess it worked pretty well, so I'm glad. I know we had to scramble on that a couple days' notice. And I thought that was good feedback, that people are able to see our meetings in all transparency, and especially these days with making sure people have access to information. Big deal. So, thanks to our cameraman back there.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, I, I wanted to give a shout-out to the district staff. My son is a freshman right now, so he's been virtual learning. So, he's got his office all set up, and he's been doing the virtual stuff, and it's going fairly well from what I can tell. He misses the class interaction with other students and stuff. The word "boring" comes up from time to time, but he's still getting his work done that way at the high school level, so just wanted to give a shout-out. Charlie?
Again, a positive. I had a visit to my board this afternoon from three young ladies, middle schoolers in our neighborhood, and they, they said that they were doing a school project, and they asked me how I felt about the schools being opened or closed and what my opinion was. And I thought it was very interesting. Talked to them for probably longer than they wanted to. We didn't know what they were getting into. I asked them how they felt, and they said that they want to be in school with their friends. I, I wish that I had taken the time to ask them a few more questions, but they were, I think, ready to move on. But it was very interesting. I'm curious as to whether it was a project that a teacher assigned them or just some kids sitting around on that, saying, hey, let's go see how people feel about this. But I thought it was interesting, and I said that I'd be very interested to hear what they find out as they walk around the neighborhood, but who knows whether they'll come back, and what it was. It was an interesting conversation.
Okay. Any other board members? Okay, Dr. Zadovsky?
Thank you. And first of all, I'd just like to say how much I miss my assistant, Jamie. Tonight, especially, a lot of dog and pony show. But very important stuff, and I'm glad we were able to make it work. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the lead team for all their help and other people here at ASC. And then also our, our district, our school board clerk, Clint Moses, for taking good notes tonight. Appreciate you doing that. And I appreciate Chris bringing that up. And that is something that I know I talked to the board about a couple, wasn't a special meeting, I think it was a meeting before. And just how difficult it has been for the district. COVID is more, is difficult enough. I mean, it's difficult at home, it's difficult in the community, and it's certainly difficult in our schools. And many of the difficult conversations at the board level are difficult conversations, and it's needed. It's, it's really needed to have nine perspectives to come forward and to develop a plan and talk about all this. But, once the decision's made, it's really important that nine people get behind the decision and, you know, support the district in the efforts of implementing those decisions. And it has created a lot of confusion for staff. I know it's created confusion for people in the community, and it's created confusion for our kids and our parents. I, I can't tell you how many times I've had kids ask me, you know, do we need to stay open? Do we need to play sports? Do we need to do this? Do we need to do that? Our kids are watching these meetings. And it's really important in a time of such uncertainty that when decisions are made, that we provide as much certainty as we can. And I, I really am proud of the work we've done. I think we've really prioritized the health and safety of everyone. At the same time, we've also prioritized providing opportunities, knowing that these kids get one shot. You know, my kids, sixth grade twins, eighth grader, they get one chance to be sixth graders. They get one chance to be an eighth grader. I can't imagine what it's like for some of us that have a senior in high school. And I just want everyone to know that we are working our hardest to try to balance all the different issues with COVID, all the different issues with health and safety, all the different issues with preparing our kids for the rest of their lives. And while rigorous debate is very much appreciated and very helpful, it's critical that as a group, we get together and work together moving forward. So, Chris, thank you for bringing that up, and hopefully moving forward, things will be a little smoother.
Amy.
Could you please address why you would talk to the middle school staff and talk about board members? Certain board members not agreeing with you, or I'm not that sure what the quote was, but something that Chris mentioned, can you...
Sure. Yeah, the middle school had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. And concerns about following the plan. And really questioned me on some of the same discussion that they had seen at the previous board meeting. And again, you know, some board members talking about the plan not being followed and things like that, creating this false narrative. And I had to explain to the middle school staff that, no, the plan does, I read exactly to them what the plan says and how the plan talks about flexibility and how the plan talks about change as we continue to do our best to respond as this whole environment continues to change. And we saw that again with the new K8 Safe at Home Learning model that we're now offering. You know, Safe at Home Learning was definitely part of our plan, but there was no way to predict that, you know, according to Thanksgiving, we would have to come up with a different option for families. So, yeah, it's, people notice. And it creates confusion, it creates questions when decisions that are made are not supportive.
Yeah, can you plug your computer back in? Plug the thing back in so the screen slide back up?
What slide do you want?
Oh, just the agenda. Normally, the agenda's up there?
You didn't, you unplugged it and then you tried to plug it back in?
Right. No, I, I need to be able to go to the different documents. So, without Jamie here, I'm not gonna have the agenda on the TV tonight.
Oh, okay.
But there are paper agendas at the door if you'd like one.
Well, I just, normally it's up there. I just want to...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Moving on, first of all, consent agenda, action to approve personnel actions. I have a motion to approve the employment of John Goodman, Energy Manager, beginning December 10th, 2020.
So...
Jim, has his hand up first. Give him the motion. Penny the second. Joe?
Any questions?
Anything you want to add? Any questions?
I was just curious, Sam, where did he do his undergraduate, and he's working on a...
Yep. UW Stevens Point. He received his, I brought his resume with. So, he was at UW Stevens Point and received his Bachelor of Science in Water Resources and hydrology with a minor in soil science and chemistry. And then he's working on his Master of Engineering in Civil and Environmental Engineering through UW Madison and anticipated to graduate May of 2020. So, we felt really comfortable with him. Sometimes it takes a little bit to find the right fit, and we felt really good about what he brings, as Phil said, that he brings to this position. Thank you. Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay, Clint, let's hold. Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Tanya Huesbe?
Yes.
Clint Moses, yes? Amy Riddle Swanson?
Yes.
Charlie Schneider?
Yes.
David Steyer?
Yes.
Jim Swanson?
Yes.
Tricia Thompson?
Yes.
Penny Burstead?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero. Moving on to the action agenda, where our first item is to approve the News Corp's proposals for 2021, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Amy, is there a second? Jim? We talked about this at our last meeting, Joe. Anything else that you want to add or any questions that anybody has?
Brian, were there any changes to point out? I don't believe there were.
No, we're not.
This is mostly title or name changes to the, some programs that we had, so... If there's no questions, Clint? Tanya Huesbe?
Yes.
Clint Moses, yes? Amy Riddle Swanson?
Yes.
Charlie Schneider?
Yes.
David Steyer?
Yes.
Jim Swanson?
Yes.
Tricia Thompson?
Yes.
Penny Burstead?
Yes.
Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero. Item 3B, approved resolution authorizing issuance and sale of 11 million, $670,000 in taxable, convertible to tax exempt, general obligation refunding funds. Is there a motion to approve? Penny, is there a second? Charlie? Joe?
So, typically, this would be something that we would have done at a regular meeting in December. I know Leah has shared with the board through her updates that this is something that she's been working on with our consultants at RW Baird and Company. However, we were noticed that RW Baird and Company were suggesting, in fact, recommending that we hurry up and get this done to take advantage of the interest rates, not knowing what the future would be. So, I fully understand if the board decides that they want more time to think this through. But to me, when I look at it, I don't want to call, I don't necessarily want to call something when we're talking about millions of dollars, a no-brainer. But to me, this is about as close as it gets. What this is, is it's refinancing our existing debt, and the estimated gross savings would be 1.56 million in future interest costs. Now, it's really important to point out that this takes advantage of the low interest rate environment during the economic recession caused by the pandemic. It's also utilizing the funds that the district has proactively levied to prepay debt and lower future payments by reducing interest costs by, again, 1.56 million dollars. This refinancing, along with our previous refinancing in 2017, will have reduced the future interest cost of our referendum by 3.3 million. And to me, that's, that's very impressive. Now, the original referendum that was passed in 2013, no, it was made in 2013 and then finalized in 2015, the interest cost of over 3.6 million dollars under the conservative planning estimates used for community discussions in the pre-referendum talks. So, when you take the interest savings through these two refinancing, and then what we were actually able to save when the bonds were originally purchased, we're talking about $7 million less than what was approved in 2013. So, Leah has done a great job with this. It's something we continue to track very closely. And again, if any board members want to discuss waiting, you know, we certainly can do that. But we wanted to at least provide you the option to capture this interest savings, if that's something you'd like to do.
Jim?
I guess my only question about waiting is the legality of doing this as an action agenda without having done it as a discussion item first? I mean, are we on shaky legal ground or not?
No, we're not. It was posted as a special meeting. Orles and Brady is a legal firm that Leah worked with to draw up the documents under the direction of Baird. So, all the pre-closing stuff has all been included for you to review. And Leah, are you aware of any legal concerns at all?
No.
Thank you. Good question, Jim.
Any other questions, board members, about the, about? Okay, Clint, let's vote.
Amy Riddle Swanson?
Yes.
Charlie Schneider?
Yes.
David Steyer?
Yes.
Jim Swanson?
Yes.
Tricia Thompson?
Yeah.
Penny Bursted?
Yes.
Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Tony Hughesby?
Yes.
Clint Moses, yes.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the.
At the beginning there, I listed all the updated numbers. For Dunn County, obviously, the cases continue to go up. I was really relieved in the deer stand on Saturday. It looked like the cases, you know, perhaps had peaked and were going to hold steady. And then I think it was more a matter of timing with test results coming in because on Sunday there was a big spike. But they were back down again today. So we're, we're watching it by the hour and, and just. Cases were twenty-seven. According to the Dunn County Facebook page today, and the report that the Health Department puts out is down to sixteen. So from twenty-seven to sixteen, but again, with the number of new cases, that certainly could increase. Unfortunately, there's been eight deaths, so, you know, whether or not that relates to hospitalizations too is, is very much of a concern. Governor Evers, on November twentieth, extended the statewide order for wearing face coverings for sixty more days. So that's been updated just a tad. And, but just like before, we will continue to follow that order and we will continue to comply with that order. And even if the order does expire, we won't be making changes to our policy on that without some action from the board. Data sharing, we continue to do our best to share data, continue to try to prioritize the weekly updates. We are not going to do a weekly update this week. We, we only have two days of school with the teachers this week and we're super busy preparing for the rest of the semester. So we're not planning to do a data update beyond what's in this report here today. But there have been a hundred and twelve total student cases since September first, sixtieth high school, thirty-three at the middle school, and nineteen at the elementary school. There's been forty-two staff cases. Thankfully, the, the cases have recovered quite well. Not every single case has, has gone as well as what we would like, but we're very thankful for the healing that has occurred. So out of the hundred and twelve student cases, currently there's sixteen active cases. And with staff, with the forty-two cases, there's only two active cases. So ninety-six students and forty staff cases have been released from isolation. Student staff attendance continues to be another data point that we track very, very closely. The student exclusions definitely peaked up again at the beginning of last week. At the last school board meeting, the seven day average was nine point four nine percent of students excluded. It had previously peaked at ten point one five back on September twenty-fourth. And on November seventeenth, it peaked at sixteen point three five percent. Friday, it had come back down to twelve point six seven, so we'll continue to watch it very closely. At the time of the last school board meeting, when we talked about staff exclusions, the rate was eight point eight five. The seven day average is now down to seven point two eight and today only four point zero six percent of the staff were excluded, which is a very, very positive sign. I really hope that our staff members are safe and make good decisions over Thanksgiving. I really think that will make a big difference about our ability to continue offering in-person instruction moving forward. We had a special meeting last week talking about the K eight Safe at Home learning options, so I'm not going to go into a ton of detail on that. But what I want to report is that we had about seven percent of our students utilizing that new option for the remainder of the semester. I can't say enough about our teachers and our principals, our directors and everyone else who has worked so hard to create this option and then really try to implement that option. That was what a lot of our day-to-day was spent doing. Teachers have been officially assigned for supporting each grade level. Teams met today to identify the classroom rosters that needed to be re-cohorted. And as we talked about last week, we're doing everything we can to try to minimize the amount of re-cohorting we have to do. We realize that that's a big change for kids to have a different classroom teacher. We try to avoid it as much as possible, especially at kindergarten and first grade level. But some re-cohorting, re-cohorting will take place. Those communications are, are ongoing. I think someone out today, but by the end of the week, everyone will be communicated with in terms of re-cohorting. Regardless, we're still prioritizing safety in the in-person instructional model. Even if we do re-cohorting, we will have six feet of spacing available in every single classroom. The free meals for kids program continues. A new online registration form for continuing that program was sent out last week. And we're really focusing on second semester. You know, I really think that our plan from now until January twenty-second is very well set. Unless we got to the point where, you know, the cases spiked so much or, you know, Thanksgiving is bad as what some people think it could be, you know, there is a potential to have to shut down. We hopefully don't, don't have to do that. Otherwise, I think our, our first semester now is, is going to be pretty stable based on the options that are there. And then looking at second semester, we're really, we really want to make sure that we communicate well and, and make sure the parents know what the options are. Right now, we still have the, the fully virtual program that we're planning to move forward. We're still planning to move forward with the in-person instructional program. And with enough notice, I don't know that the Safe at Home option that we're providing for the, the end of the semester would be needed. But we're continuing to study that and talk with our teachers. Any questions so far?
Quick clarification. So the Safe at Home right now for K three, does that go through the semester or just to winter break?
It goes through the semester, January twenty-second. And we've had some questions on that, Amy. Because the elementary year is, is not necessarily the same as the high school year with the semesters. But the reason why it's aligned that way is the fully virtual program that a number of families signed up for at the beginning of the year, that goes through that same time period.
Okay.
So it just makes sense to align everything to that date. And it will create some issues with report cards. And our teachers, you know, they'll, they'll be prepared to handle that. But even now, moving into the Safe at Home model, there are going to be some reporting issues. You know, there's going to be a little bit of a lag here the first couple of days when we come back. We can't pull those kids out of the Skyward classrooms too early before the grades get finalized for their in-person work. But I would say by the end of that first week, kids will all be moved over into their new classes electronically, even though instructional start on day one. But in terms of the record keeping piece, there'll be a couple day lag. Any other questions so far?
Can I ask, Joe, the seven percent, how many of it, how percentage wise was elementary versus middle school?
Elementary versus middle school? I, I think, I think it was pretty level across the board, Tanya. Probably around ten to twelve students per grade level.
And then teachers being affected with that, how many, having to go, no longer have their in-person than they will be virtual? How many teachers was the?
Kindergarten and first grade, we were not, we, we did not need to take teachers out of the classroom. We're going to utilize our instructional coaches, both our English Language Arts Instructional Coach and our Math Instructional Coach. They're both certified elementary teachers and they both taught elementary. So between the two of those teachers, they're going to kind of team teach and use their expertise in those areas for the first and second grade. Third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, we are going to have to reduce the section. And we went through all the class rosters. We identified, you know, whether, there's actually going to be a couple of schools where there might be fifty-seven kids for four teachers. So there was definitely a, an opportunity there to do that. They still keep small class sizes with the in-person instructional model. A third grade, though, I don't think we're going to have to re-cohort the way that there's two student teachers involved in that grade level at River Heights as well. But we will be re-cohorting a bit at second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. So when you look at providing all this flexibility and all this choice, we don't want to re-cohort anybody if we don't have to, but I'm, I'm very pleased that we're able to do that without too much re-cohorting. At the middle school level, Mr. Betcher worked with the teachers. And because there's enough kids that have a virtual cohort at each grade level, six, seventh, and eighth, there is going to be just a little bit of re-cohorting there for the kids in the smallest section. They'll be re-cohorted to a different section. And then that virtual cohort will go through the schedule just like they were at school. So I, I think it's a great plan. It requires just a little bit of re-cohorting, but not nearly as much as we had feared at the beginning.
Did you have any issues with filling the virtual staffing positions in the district since we got, when the kids moved to that?
You know, it's, it's interesting, Dave. It was a lot like the summer. You know, obviously, this is new for everyone and there's a lot of anxiety with it. But in the summer, when we got all these virtual positions open, we didn't have many internal staff members interested in those virtual positions. Our teachers love to teach kids. They love to teach kids in person. We did have a couple of teachers in the summer that, you know, through family concerns and such, they felt it was the best option and the most responsible thing to do. But we ended up hiring a number of outside teachers to provide that support for the virtual program. Well, you know, we have heard from our teachers and there's still are teachers that are concerned with COVID and with, you know, the, the risks associated with COVID. So I thought perhaps now we would have a lot of interest. In fact, I thought maybe we'd have some difficult decisions having multiple people interested in one position. It was the opposite. Our teachers, everyone who's going to do the virtual program is going to do a great job. But actually, it was more about recruiting people to do it than selecting people to do it. So we, we do have teachers and they're going to do a great job. But it was interesting that, that, you know, whether we're talking about middle school or elementary, there wasn't like a bunch of teachers volunteering to get out of the classroom. That wasn't the case at all. Thanks, Dave.
Jim, the re-cohorting, is it mostly shuffling teachers into new places or are the students going from their cohort to different cohorts? How's that kind of work?
Did students go into different classrooms? So for instance, at second grade, there was a section at Oaklawn, or the multiple sections, four sections at Oaklawn. And with the number of students that went virtual and having the small sections already, we were able to maintain class size by going from four sections to three sections. So those students who were in the smallest section, they're being re-cohorted into three other classrooms. So it's more about that. At the middle school, it's a little bit different. He's going to, Mr. Betcher's putting all the virtual students in one cohort and then they're going to go from teacher to teacher. But if they had students in that smallest cohort that he'd reallocated, there, there are some in-person students that'll be going to a different in-person cohort.
Was there any effort with the cohorting to like keep friends together and stuff? Because that's really a traumatic thing for especially elementary kids. You all of a sudden lose all your friends and you go someplace else for the point of reference. Was there any thought given to that or effort?
No, there really wasn't, Jim. And, and that is something we, there definitely was thought put into that. But what we wanted to do is try to look at the, the smallest number of people affected possible. It really made sense to look at it from a number standpoint. The nice thing about Monomity is even though there are, you know, kids that have best friends and such, even though, you know, we're bigger than some towns, we're still small enough where I think pretty much in every cohort, students will know someone and have a friendly face there. And if not, it's a good opportunity to make new friends.
Clint?
Jim, I should, Jim, I should ask my question. Every fall, my kids say they're not in any of their friends' classes anyway. Somehow that randomly just happens, but.
Yeah.
Anybody else so far? So I, I, the last thing I want to talk about, our staff concerns. And, you know, we continue to really work hard to listen to our staff. The principals do a great job. We talked about this a little bit in the last meeting about kind of temperature checks. I can't remember exactly the term one of the board members used, but our principals are checking in all the time. We did have some staff members that put together some written comments. I had shared those with the board in a previous communication. And, and those concerns are real. And, and we have listened to those concerns. You know, many of the concerns are related to workload. Some are related to safety and some are related to the network outage we had in October. And especially with the network outage, I, I can totally appreciate how that really threw things for a loop and is out of our control, but at the same time, it could have come at a worse time. I already mentioned, I, I did have a meeting with the middle school staff. Prior to that, I met with the high school staff. I've offered for the elementaries to come visit there and I'm hoping that those will be scheduled soon. But in addition to like these formal staff meetings, I just want to let you know that I have talked to a ton of teachers. Actually, Friday night at Deer Camp, I was talking to a teacher on the cell phone. Luckily, I had good enough reception. We are doing a ton of outreach on that because we really do care what our staff members have to say. And, and our staff members really have great ideas about how we can keep moving forward in the most positive manner. But the staff loads are concerning. I think some of the changes we have made have helped. Again, moving the high school to the virtual environment has really supported the K eight schools. It was getting to the point where we were pulling people left and right. And prep time is already short this year, but then when we have people out and we have to pull people from prep times or, or things like that, it just wasn't sustainable. So I think that was very helpful. I, I know everyone really appreciated the board allowing to have the high school staff some time to prepare for that change and catch their breath. And then this week, having today and tomorrow, a chance for the K eight teachers to prepare for the rest of the semester and catch their breath a little bit. And really what I think our teachers miss the most is that time to collaborate with their colleagues. I think we all miss that collaboration with our family members and extended family members and friends. But that, that's real in our schools too. So you throw all the mitigation measures on top of that and then all the extra duties, it really has been difficult. But I think we responded well. I think we put ourselves in a good position, but we can only control so much of this. We really do need the community to, to help us here in the next several days, especially with Thanksgiving coming up. It's so tempting. I had to break the news to my parents on Friday that we weren't going to be going down the portage for Thanksgiving. And that, that was not a fun conversation to have at all, but I just know it's the right thing to do for us right now. Any questions about that or comments?
Do you know, Joe, on District White, with the Safe at Home and the virtual school option, how many students are out of school? Do those two go there?
Um, Dave, I, I have to probably calculate it. I don't think the directors remember exactly how many.
Maybe they could look it up while we're working. I, I shouldn't have put you on the spot, but I was just thinking about it, wondering where we were at District White.
It, it's tough because we've actually had a lot of students come back in. And even since we announced the Safe at Home numbers, we've gotten emails from people saying, well, I told my son or daughter that they're coming back for Thanksgiving, they're going to be going virtual. And they said, it was, it's, it's not worth the fight. They're going to be coming back to school. Can you please drop our application? So, but it's, but there's, you know, it goes both ways a little bit.
If, if they get that, that's fine.
I, I want to guess about seven hundred kids if I had to really guess total out of thirty-four hundred. And then lastly, student activities. As you know, there's a lot of discussion about completing the fall sports. The swim team was able to go to state, a swim and dive team, and it's great to see the coverage of that. The football team unfortunately was all set to play their playoff game. And then the morning of the game, there was a situation. And again, I can't say I'm proud, I can't say enough how proud I am of our players, our coaches, and following the protocol. After all that stuff, the coach would have spent that time to come and talk to the board and Dr. Walker did. But at the end of the day, you know, the health and safety of everyone involved was put first. The football team did not play. And then once they're out of that postseason bracket, we made a decision that they, there was no need to play a final game. So that season's completed. The winter sports are moving forward. Mr. Mearon did a great job communicating expectations with the coaches. He had an individual meeting with every single coach. And then him and the other principals at the high school have been doing compliance checks. We know our coaches do a good job, but again, this is so new for everybody. We felt that those compliance checks were very important. My understanding is that the coaches are doing a great job and giving the students a nice opportunity to participate in those activities. And again, it's not just sports, but it's also activities. And the decisions related to other non-school winter sports and activities, that's been postponed till at least January first. That's the end of my report. Are there any other questions?
Jim, well, we had, at the last meeting, we talked about.
Jim, well, we had, at the last meeting, we talked about the basketball and the swimming. We also talked about some, especially like basketball and some other winter sports being more high-risk than others, and maybe revisiting that decision. They're moving forward now, but I'd like regular reports on compliance and stuff and what's going on because, you know, even like that one, women are about, for me, you know, they were really concerned about winter sports because it's indoors, because of the proximity of players to each other, you know, and stuff. So I think that's really something we're going to have to really keep an eye on because one person with COVID could worry about two basketball teams at the game. I mean, I've played enough basketball to know that you just can't social distance and not read on people playing basketball.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It's definitely a co-horted model, and if there's an exposure, it's going to be a three-week quarantine or three-week stop to the program. You know, there's going to be the quarantine period, and then there's a re-acclimation period. So I think you're going to see more difficulties with winter sports than you did with fall. I think there's going to be a lot more in-and-out cancellations, but I will continue to have student athletics and activities as part of my COVID report at each board meeting.
Clint? Now, to kind of echo, just I'm copying Jim and I don't everything. To echo what his concern was, is there a threshold that's going to be set where we would say we're not going to do winter sports? Because I know in the fall, when we talked about reopening plan, we said if we got to this point, it was all virtual, that we may just continue athletics and activities? Or is this something that's going to have to be on the action agenda that we have to discuss and vote on at every meeting because things could change very quickly? So for us to add this as a discussion and then deal with it two weeks or a month later, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Right. Well, I can tell you, Clint, you know, the way the board approved it is that there's not the threshold of virtual would automatically end it. I can tell you, and some of my colleagues feel the same way, in a sense, the way the cohorting model is set up is going to somewhat take care of itself. Like I mentioned, if there is an exposure, you know, that team's going to be shut down for three weeks. So essentially, it is going to be an automatic closure for that team. However, you know, if the board wanted to revisit the decision of allowing the winter sports, you know, that's certainly something a board member could request for an action. But until something like that was to happen, we're going to move forward with what the board approved.
I'm just going to handle the comment if they will let me. I don't want to micromanage what the coaches are doing, but are, is it, your understanding when they say basketball, for instance, are they going to cohort like three small varsity teams or two small varsity teams instead of like one? So they can have them being separate. And here again, I don't want to micromanage, but if someone gets exposed during a practice, that could shut the whole team down. So to me, it would make sense to have smaller groups that you would just interchange if there was a exposure.
My understanding of the regulations, Clint, or the guidance, I should say, from WIA is that each team itself would be co-horted. So you're not going to have the varsity team cohort or scrimmage against the JV team or anything like that. Within the team itself, really, it's going to be up to the coach depending on, you know, what kind of style they're going to play, things like that. You know, I know that they're trying to mitigate, even with their practices and stuff, I don't think you're going to see as much of that close contact. But like Jim said, the way basketball is, if there's an exposure, I think you're going to see close contacts and an entire team is going to be shut down for that three weeks.
Thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, could you also talk about wrestling? What are they doing? Because I mean, that's another awful close contact sport.
Yeah. Wrestling is going to be a little bit different because it's not as much of a team activity compared to basketball. So you can do smaller cohorts in wrestling. And it's going to depend on the number of athletes at the different weight classes, and the coaches are really in the best position to determine which of those weight classes will be co-horted. But you know this, you're not going to have a heavyweight wrestler, you know, sparring with a lightweight. I don't know, I'm not a wrestling guy. You know, whatever. Anyway, you know what I mean.
Yeah, I got you.
So you kind of naturally have those cohorts anyway, but they're going to be more purposeful this year where, you know, in previous years, maybe you would have a guy wrestle up a little bit to, you know, get a different challenge or whatever. I don't think you're going to see much of that this year.
Another thing they talked to two of us as well was limiting dual meats only to one team, not having any, you know, down the road from a competition standpoint, no tournaments.
And I think also with the wrestling, they're only allowing one meat per week because that way they can contact trace a situation much better.
Tanya?
I don't mean to go back to basketball. I started today. They were very heated. Coach Riley did a fabulous job with Perplex, he made it a meat at the training meeting, and really broke down the topic of all the last scenarios. This happens, and this is going to happen, and, you know, in parts of, obviously, high education, separates and everything else. So they're actually creating their cohort today. So they have one day done, and they'll know by tonight which one they're in, so, yeah. I think they did a great job with, I mean, the football and took some of those skills that they learned from that and trying to implement it, but that's just from parents' perspective.
And that's where it helps having someone like Coach Riley, who was on the football staff, is an assistant coach as well. He really got to see that in the fall. And I know that the other winter coaches have, there's others that have a similar experience or they've had good communication with those coaches to help build those plans.
Any other questions?
Dave, one more thing to add, and I'll add this to my COVID report. In talking to the superintendents in the Big Rivers Conference, there's a discussion about spectators, and right now, it appears that all schools are in agreement. There'll be no visiting spectators and only allowing parents. So parents for that cohort. So if the varsity team's playing, just the varsity parents would be there. You know, typically, varsity team, you know, 12 to 15 students. And then, you know, if the JV plays before them, the parents for the JV team would be able to come watch that game, but then they would be required to exit the facility prior to the varsity game, so...
That's all Big Rivers?
Yes. I don't know if there's been formal action in some places, but that's the intention of the superintendents.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe?
Jim, just a quick, out of this, when you said JV and varsity, are they going to be sharing in gym when they practice or are they going to be separate?
They're going to be separate, separate cohorts. In fact, that's another thing with not having the youth activities that provides a little more access not only to the field house, but also some of the outdoor reg gyms.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to discussion item 4B, discuss 2021, 2022 budget plan and timeline.
So you guys just got done with the last budget, and I appreciate Leah putting this together. Really, it's the same process we've used for a number of years now. I think it really provides an organized fashion for developing the budget. We're usually really good at hitting those timelines and those marks. Again, going into this year, it's going to be a new biennial state budget, so it's very possible that things, you know, could have a wrench in them, but I think generally the plan has worked very well, and unless there's any suggestions, that's what we plan to follow for this next budget. Any comments from the board members?
Clint?
Question isn't that time.
Hey!
One thing I do see, one thing I do see in your timeline is the budget mid-year hearing meeting is set for January 10th. That's our next item on the agenda. Okay, we move on to item C, set date and format for mid-year budget hearing. We talked about this a little bit at our two meetings ago, yes?
Yeah, and we wanted to follow up on that. Just to clarify, the mid-year budget hearing really is more about the previous year's budget and the previous trends. And Charlie, I thought your idea was really an interesting idea of waiting longer until we know more about what's being proposed by DPI and the governor and everything, but that's not really the purpose of the budget hearing, the mid-year budget hearing. That'll be more in the preliminary estimate that comes later. So we do plan to move forward with the budget hearing in January.
Sound good? Okay, so it's scheduled for 5 o'clock PM on January 11th. So typically, when we hear 5, our budget hearing and our regular school board meeting will start at 5:30. Any questions? Okay, moving on to item B, review extra curriculum or staff contract requests. There for your information. We have one. Okay. Next meeting dates. Our next board meeting is December 14th. And then we will not have another meeting in December, so just the one meeting coming up in December, the 14th. So I'm guessing we might be a little ahead of your agenda for that meeting?
A little bit. And one thing to point out is that, you know, with winter break, there is no meeting scheduled for the 28th at this time. But, you know, with COVID, again, this is all so different. I sure hope that things are calm, and that's not needed, but in the event that something's needed, we will reach out and schedule a special meeting. Right now, we have no plans to do that.
Okay, there's nothing further, a motion to adjourn. Jim, second? Pandy, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank Chris, thanks.